This is the Bangor School Committee regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 17th. And if you could please rise for the pledge. Okay, thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
Okay. And public comments. And as a reminder, members of the public may address the committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. And before starting, please state your name and place of residence. And do we have any public comments? Yes, please come. State your name and place of residence.
Jane Perry. I'm a Tree Streets mom. I'm here with concerns about staff vacancies as we approach two weeks of starting school and have come across some information that seemed confusing and kind of incomplete. So I thought this would be a good place to find out. On the 12th, there was a BDN headline, "National Teacher Shortage Isn't Affecting Bangor Area", where your department spokesperson talked about 13 of 15 positions have been filled and two other offers have been made and only three teachers retired last year. And I wonder, besides the three retiring teachers, how many teachers and staff have left, resigned? Because when I look under vacancies on the school department website, there's 112 today and 34 are ed techs, which I find pretty alarming. Also, I just, I was just thinking, I wonder if we conduct exit interviews and review them because that might be a valuable tool for perhaps avoiding this situation in future in part at least. And I think we missed an opportunity with this article as well to maybe make a plea for help because it looks really like we need it. And Portland School Department has the same format we do for vacancies. And I note that they have 46 today and six are ed techs. And in a more recent article yesterday, the superintendent there is quoted with his six ed tech vacancy is saying that they have an acute shortage of special education professionals and that it will make providing compliance with our individualized education plan, our specialized education plans will make it complex and that it creates real challenges where we have specialized programs that have students require one-on-one services and that will be a huge challenge for us. So I'm worried. And in my memory, our community has always been supportive and highly valued our teachers and rightly so. I'm worried that this isn't being reflected in their workplace. I don't think it's safe to start the school year missing 34 ed techs. I don't know how many of those can be filled two weeks before school, but I was just wondering what the plan is. Are we going to try and get teachers out of retirement who they, their well-deserved retirement or long-term subs or just because it doesn't seem safe to start with 34?
Thank you so much. And I'll make sure to have Superintendent Tager address your concerns. Thank you. Okay. And moving on to superintendents' proposals and updates, we don't have any action items, but we have several informational items. And the first is the student tuition update. Superintendent Tager?
Yes. School Safety and Communications Director Ray Finney will provide the committee with an update on student tuition. Also, Principal Butler will help and maybe some others.
The light is on. Hopefully people can hear me. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm actually very happy to report that over the past year, we've actually recruited 32 tuition students to the Bangor School Department. At the end of last year, we had 37 students from sending communities who graduated. So we are almost on par. And as some of our guidance counselors will tell you, we still have applications coming in today. So we're looking very good at those. Over the past year, we've received some challenges to that lofty goal of 50 that I reported to you and I met with you first. And some of those challenges were that COVID got worse for us in the spring of 2020, 2022. For those of you who remember, we had plans of going into schools. Some of those visits were canceled due to COVID restrictions, masking policies, not having visitors from outside schools entering. Many schools didn't allow those in-person visits. We did Zoom visits instead. Planned events such as the traveling play was not able to take place and they were canceled. And we also learned that there were smaller class sizes at our sending school districts. Some, one in particular, Holbrook School, which when my daughter was an eighth grader, had 63 students, last year only had 44. So there was a large difference in the size of their classes. Some of the positives that we learned, though, were that outdoor athletic events were great ways to get students to experience something and to take pride in what Bangor had to offer. Our student ambassadors that we had, we trained them and they led tours, they did shadow visits, and they were great ambassadors to what could be expected from a Bangor student. And those students are actually still doing the orientation, which will be next week. So we're continuing to use them and work with them and have them engage in our new students. Our next steps is to adjust our goal and not be as lofty as 50, but to keep a goal of 35 or 36. To continue positive stories about the Bangor High School, but also the Bangor School Department as a whole. Using our social media, we found that that attracted our sophomores, juniors, and senior students, not just incoming freshmen. Targeting student accomplishments, what students do over the summer, athletics, TikToks. We have a large following of TikTok viewers from our student age population. It's not necessarily parents and grandparents, but it's the students themselves who are watching those videos and seeing themselves reflected in those areas. We also have the opportunity to learn from others. We have a recent hire of a student, of a school counselor, who has had the opportunity to work in two sending school districts before now. And so asking her what her experience is working with eighth-grade families, when's a good time to engage those families and learning from her and using that to our advantage is a great opportunity. Just to let you guys know, we also, we always talk about our budget. And I talked to Jerry a little bit beforehand, and I want to let you know what the impact of now 108 students, of tuition students, means. For every 100 students that we have from sending communities, it affects the Bangor taxpayer by five cents on the mill rate, which means that the more students we give the opportunity to experience a Bangor high school education, it also impacts our students here by making things more affordable for them and their families. At this point in time, I'm going to ask Paul to come up and talk about some of the incentives and some of the things we have going on this year and hopefully non-COVID year.
So 50 is a lot. I hope for it. We strive for it. We encumbered a little bit, but in some ways, it doesn't change what we know to be, be the thing that sells a student on choosing a high school when they have choice, and that's the people that are involved. And Dr. Leach is to be credited for pulling together the student ambassadors. I thought that was a nice touch. What we would like to do this year, and I think I'm just a firm believer that in the best of ways, that competition makes you better. And we are competing with schools. The community is rich, Maine is rich with a strong local education tradition. High schools that had the ability to receive tuition students in the past but hadn't are now eager, as we have always been, to welcome students to their, to their schools. And that sharpened our lens a little bit. About five or six years ago, we started informal surveying and Ray talked about the nights that were invited out to communities. They're not all night, some afternoons, some school days. And we're just informal querying of parents, thinking about what the types of questions they asked. And what it became clear was something that we kind of knew. We're a big school. And so that started us communicating all the ways that Bangor High School is a big, small school. Lots of, lots of opportunity, but also long on connections. There was one time around that time at a, out at night out in Glenburn where always, and again, it's myself and, and Dr. Leach and sometimes Mrs. Air who go out and interface on that night, a parent asked a question, "Are class sizes at Bangor High School really 30?" And that spoke a lot. At that time, it was, I can tell you, it was 18.9 per class. And we just started in all ways, in the way that we communicated about the school and the personalized, customized way that we talked to not just Glenburn, but that's the most longstanding example, students who have come through, the nature of the relationship, how long it's been there. When they come to the school, opening up classrooms so they can see a physical learning space and see that it doesn't look any smaller, there'd be about 20 students would be in there comfortably. I think that moving forward, the touches need to be more frequent, routine, and personalized. If Mr. Manu San was asked to talk about it, he has a master plan for inviting every community to every event going. And those things sell, but it's also being able to participate in the arts. We had, I think it was the class of 2016 where we had 50 tuition students. However, that was among a class of 350 overall. And that was a point where we really sharpened our lens. We did some things like the custom experiences because at that point, we couldn't have that many students in the building for a step up there. So we had to customize, we had to personalize, we had to get multiple touches. And 50 sounds like a lot, and it actually is a proportionate uptick if you balance that well. You know, we got 50 from among, you know, a larger number in the region at that time. I do think we need to return to that now that we're not encumbered by COVID, that we do have good talented people who speak well about the school. We have a run of kids who are eager, willing, and trained to talk about it. And we have comprehensive programs that we can put on display in all kinds of ways. I just think we can't wait until January or December, January to be in a formal conversation. I think you need to have multiple informal conversations. You need to be in person. They need to receive things from us and all the diverse ways that any place of quality communicates its quality and invites a relationship with people is what we'll be about this year. So I'm looking forward to it. 32 is a good number. It's not unusual for us to end up, and I won't brag about myself and my ability to prognosticate tuition numbers, but I nail it on the nose just about every year within one or two. We're up higher than what I saw, what was proportionately or what our share was. We're up a little bit. It's not uncommon for us by the end of the first semester to be up seven or eight even more students. And that's a fact of students who have made a choice. It wasn't the right one. And our door is always open. So I think it is a reasonable goal to go 35 or 40. It all is a function, very much a function of the population in the region, but it's also a function of our hustle, our intelligence, and the way that we can speak articulately and give quality touches to kids as they, families as they're formulating and then making a decision in January. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Do you have a sense of what, what type of kid is more likely to come to Bangor? Because I know our STEM Academy is fantastic and has an amazing recruitment. So are these mostly STEM kids? Are they not academy kids?
A range of students. Honestly, yes. And I got some good advice and I was lucky enough, for a number of years at Glenburn in particular, and we welcome students from a number of communities, but Glenburn's the longstanding one. It's right on Broadway, right? There was a, their counselor there for many years, recently left, was a high school classmate and a friend of mine. So it was invitation to honest conversation. And I said, Beth, first couple of years, what, how was it? Where do we go from here? And we were selling too much the academic program, you know? And hi, you can go to the moon, you know, in a million APs. And that's great. And there is a cadre of students that you want that are charging to the finish line. But you also want kids who can have the breadth and depth. Our special education program draws students. Our ROTC program draws students. So all of our appeals need to be diverse and they need to be considerate of the range of folks who are in a population of 50 or so. But definitely the hard-charging academic students are ones that sort of lead the pack. Athletics has been big and that's an important thing for people. And, you know, I should mention that there was wisdom in the decision a few years ago to topple the bus domino. There was a time when some sending communities weren't interested in coordinating a bus to the high school. And there was persistence and common sense and maybe some personal pleas by families in those communities who wanted Bangor to be a choice and wanted a chance to have the bus. So those things matter too. But I would say overall, we, you know, we are a school. We go after academic program. We've tried to be really diverse in the ways that we appeal to people.
And I love that. I love that, you know, it's, we want it to be well-rounded. And I think this committee has worked so hard on mental health and social emotional peace and DEI. So I think that's something that we can push out there as well.
Absolutely.
Member Sichters?
I just want to say thank you. I mean, I really especially love the, the mill rate statistic. I think that's incredibly helpful for, for all of us to know and share. And, you know, the next time that somebody wants to complain about taxes, we can say, well, go out there and recruit some students for us. So we'd love to have them, but, so thank you very much.
I'll swing this on Adam and Sharon tonight. I'd like to maybe look at first semester shadows. Right? Kids in the building? That's all their, that's all their hustle when it, when we come up with a good idea. But we usually will shadow in the second semester, shadow early on often or even earlier in the year and open the door and just get those who are already mindful about a choice, a chance to solidify the choice and, and see the, and the kids and the people why they think that's a good choice.
Member Luciano?
Do we have an idea yet of what the size of the ninth grade class is?
I think we're around 270, is that correct?
Okay. And what is the current senior class? I'm just curious about.
286, I think, 285 or 6 around there.
I know that the numbers of, I remember looking at them, I think, earlier this year and they were, they'd come down a bit since the mid-teens, but we expected that.
Yeah. The biggest high school's been since I've been there is 1,241. As small as it's been, it's 1,149. When I was a student, my graduating class was 365. And as to my knowledge, the highest, the enrollment spend at Bangor High School is a little over 1,650. So the building has responded. That class of 2016 I mentioned, I'm told that those are the ice storm babies. I'm sure, I didn't know. We got a bubble coming through and nobody, nobody really told me why. Then I think it might've been rain. So those, it's all the ice storm babies. It's like, oh, that's good. We should have another weather calamity. So we're happy with the numbers. A little bit worried out of the gate, but happy where they're ending up. And I think they'll climb a little.
I just had a question for Ray too regarding like the videos that you put together. And I don't know how early we can push those out too for...
So I have some videos actually planned already. We have videos planned for mentoring. We have videos planned for some students who had some activities over the summer, some things that were going on. We had, did a feature that is actually being sent out in the communique as one of our students who's accomplished and went on to the Air Force Academy. And so there's a video that's going to be going out this week, well, within the week, early next week.
I know that entices families and...
Absolutely.
No one from the Air Force Academy was not zoned here, correct?
She was, she was actually from a sending school, yes. She's from VIZI and she speaks very highly of the Bangor School Department. So it was very nice.
I love your work, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Oh.
I just had a quick question. Have we ever considered starting, just doing drop-in visits at sixth grade? You know, just do a once-in, hey, this is Bangor High, it's great. And then come back at seventh grade and maybe build the hype a little?
Sorry, everyone.
We haven't, but that is something that we've thought about, but we haven't been doing up until this point. But actually, Adam and I had a conversation not too long ago about how students are making those decisions much earlier. When we think about it, you know, you know, high school freshmen and sophomores are thinking about college. So it only makes sense that, you know, that would be the same for anyone considering high school from those sending schools. So, I mean, I, I think marketing to younger grades is a good idea. And I think the school sells itself in every time that we have an event or can invite kids into our schools. I think that's a great way to get them to know what the Bangor experience is all about.
Could I just ask a quick follow-up to that? And I apologize, I'm not really prepared tonight. Regarding, so I know, so things like the, one of the academies, the performing arts academies, I apologize, I'm not a high schooler. Sorry, guys. Visual and performing arts. Like I know that in some of the local schools, they'll start applying to that at third grade. So, you know, that's one of those things where I feel like if we're starting those kids on the path for our high school in third grade, why, first of all, I'm very curious about why we're doing that. That's a different story for another day. But my other question would be more, why, if that's, that's what we do, then why aren't we doing it at other schools?
Oh, you mean?
Sending, I mean, only out of, if we're starting to recruit our own students into these STEM academies in third grade, why wouldn't we try that at other places?
Well, you want to take that?
So for, that's kind of a, that's got a lot of tentacles, that, that issue. So, so for example, with the STEM Academy, it's, it's a very rigorous academy and students are starting the STEM Academy as freshmen in Honors Algebra II.
Right.
Most of the sending communities don't even offer Algebra I to their eighth graders. So it's a, that is, that is a limiting factor. One of the, I think one of the great things that we could do to improve the way we recruit, keeping in mind that we, we have to limit the amount of time we spend with kids that aren't Bangor High School students so that we spend time with the ones that are. So that's a little bit of a challenge with time. But a great avenue for recruiting is to do things with soccer, youth football, Little League, because kids are making friendships and foundations and families are getting together. You know, so VIZI and Glenburn are more likely to partner with Herman and Orno with, with those youth sports activities. And I think we can work with more community, community organizations. Athletics would be a good one because at the youth ages, there's going to be a larger pool of kids than there will be as they start to get closer to high school. But I don't know if that completely answers your question.
Not really, but that's, it's a good start. It's helpful.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, it's, it's finding into those niches and organizations that, that serve as special interests and, and being able to reach out in a lot of different directions.
Okay. Thanks.
Member Sichters?
Do we offer to those sending school students summer school to, like for STEM, to get them, say geometry? I know you can, you can do, you can start STEM as a freshman with geometry, but a lot of those sending schools do not even offer...
Yeah, so there, there's definitely opportunities through the different academies where they might offer the opportunity for a student to accelerate through geometry, to be able to start Algebra II. There is a robotics team that actively looks to try to get middle school students to participate in the summer. So those things are definitely improving and, and that's something that we can continue to, to reach out to. But I think one of the big keys is that we are connecting with kids before the eighth grade. It's, it's often something that I will tell to the students when I do school visits is that it's a big responsibility to be an eighth grader choosing your high school. It's almost exactly the way seniors are choosing their college. So they're getting a great experience through that. So it's a very responsible decision. But I'll tell college recruiters, college recruiters will want to come to our school in September and October to talk to seniors. Too late. They've already made up their minds. They should be talking to juniors and sophomores. And, and so the same is true for us. We should be talking to sixth and seventh graders more than we're talking to eighth graders. I will add too, the culture of the other schools is something that has to be respected as well. So to say we're going to get class time to be able to go in and sell the idea of Bangor High School is probably not a realistic thing to do. So using those other organizations is something that we probably have to reach into.
Thank you all so much. Okay, so moving on to a report of reassignments for the school year.
I'm reporting the following teacher reassignments for the school year 2022-2023. Emily Throck Morton from English teacher at Bangor High School to .4 English teacher and .6 graduation coordinator at Bangor High School. Angela Domina, .6 English teacher at Bangor High School to .6 English teacher and .4 graduation coordinator at Bangor High School. Joel Bragdon from physical education teacher at .9 Down East School and .1 Bangor Regional Program to physical education teacher at Down East School. Zachary Finney from physical education teacher at .5 14th Street School, .4 Vine Street School, .1 Bangor Regional Program to physical education teacher at .5 14th Street School, .3 Vine Street School, and .2 Bangor Regional Program. Shayna Curtis from literacy coach at .9 Vine Street School and .1 14th Street School to literacy coach at Vine Street School. Angela Lee from Title I teacher at Down East School to Title I teacher at .6 Down East School and .16 at All Saints Catholic School and .24 at Bangor Christian School. Kristy McClure from Title I teacher Abraham Lincoln School to Title I teacher at .4 Abraham Lincoln School and .6 Down East School. Shelley Moore from literacy coach at .2 Abraham Lincoln School, .2 Fruit Street School and .6 Fairmount School to literacy coach at Fairmount School. Daniel Schneider from Title I teacher at Vine Street School to Title I teacher at Down East School. Deborah Swett from literacy coach at .7 Down East School, .2 Mary Snow School, .1 Bangor Regional to literacy coach at .3 Abraham Lincoln School, .2 14th Street School, .2 Mary Schools, Mary Snow School, .6 Fruit Street School, and .1 Bangor Regional.
Okay, thank you. And next we have report of resignations.
Reporting the following resignations for the school year 2022-2023. Kristy Charette, literacy coach, Fairmount School. Sabrina Illingsworth, special education teacher, Bangor High School. Michelle Mason, social worker, Bangor Regional. Mackenzie York, special ed teacher, Bangor Regional. Deborah Yeo, IEP coordinator, Vine Street School. Michael Hurson, varsity assistant ice hockey coach, Bangor High School.
And lastly, we have report of leave of absence.
Reporting a leave of absence from November 2022 to June 2023, Simon Chatenever, science teacher, Bangor High School.
Thank you. We move on to business action items and action items. We have the minutes of the regular meeting of July 2022.
Recommending approval of the draft minutes of the July 2022 regular school committee meeting.
Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Passes 5-0. Thank you.
And next we have personnel. We have nominations of a teacher.
Recommending the following teacher nominations for the 2022-2023 school year with a one-year probationary contract. Mason Walling, K-8 special ed teacher, Bangor Regional. Jamie Bartlett, social worker, Bangor Regional.
Can I get a motion, please? Any questions? All in favor?
Motion passes 5-0.
Next we have extra duty assignments, the 21-22 school year.
I'm recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for the school year 21-22. Stuart Greener, .5 IEP coordinator, Bangor High School.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Should that be 2022, 2023?
No, that one will, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That one will be 2021-22. The next set will be 22-23. This is a person that did some work for us on IEPs. After we had a change in department chair though, so we want to make sure we cover his pay for that work. So it's from the past year. Good question.
And all in favor?
Motion passes 5-0.
So next we have the 22-23 school year.
Recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for the school year 22-22-23. Zachary Finney, Boys B soccer coach, James F. Doughty School. Daniel Magus, Boys A soccer coach, William S. Cohen School. Lee Klein, Boys B soccer coach, William S. Cohen School. Thomas Leonard, .87 IEP coordinator, James F. Doughty School. Katrina LaJoy, Governance Committee District-wide. Jamie Jarvis, Governance Chair District-wide.
And motion, please.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Passes five zero, thank you.
Next, we have second reading of a policy. We have revised policy AC, non-discrimination and affirmative action.
I'm recommending second reading of revised policy, revised policy AC, non-discrimination and affirmative action.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Passes five zero, thank you.
Next, we have introduction items, and then we have two first readings of policies. The first one, we have revised policy GDB eight, Adult and Community Education Compensation Guide.
Okay, you've also got, do you want to do?
Yes, can we do them separately?
Yep, we sure can. Okay, revised policy GDB eight, Adult Community Education Compensation Guide. I'm recommending the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion on that one?
No.
All in favor?
Passes five zero.
So next, we have the revised policy JICA Student Dress.
You skipped the GDB seven.
Oh, I don't have that one here, sorry. So revised policy GDB seven, Support Staff Compensation Guide.
Thank you. I'm recommending the first reading of revised policy GDB seven, Support Staff Compensation Guide.
Second.
Any discussion? Member Sectors.
Yes, I, I know that we had a, the speaker today, Ms. Perry, and I think that this is part of what we're trying to do, to make sure that every single one of those positions are filled. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased to be supporting this tonight.
Hi, Member Mendel.
Yeah, I don't know if this would be the appropriate time, but would you be able to address the discrepancy that Mrs. Perry pointed out?
I can, how about if we do it during the comments at the end? If you want to ask about it, then normally I would call her, which I can still do. But I can give a summary if you want to know about hiring.
Yeah, I think the committee would be interested in hearing.
Sure, so we'll leave it towards the end.
Thank you.
And we didn't, we didn't vote on that, right? All in favor?
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. And so now, now we're moving on to that. Yep, that's the one I have. So revised policy JICA Student Dress.
I'm recommending first reading of revised policy JICA Student Dress Code.
So moved.
I actually had a comment.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I just wanted to highlight the DEI committee work on this. I took a look at that dress code policy. I have a, have a little bit of a little hot streak for our dress codes that have some issues, for fairness, and was really happy to see very clear language that is extremely direct and very hard to interpret in other than its intention, which is very nice for something like a dress code. So I just, thank you for the hard work on that, everyone.
And I have to thank Dana for her great, outstanding work on this. I reviewed it as well, and there's been a lot of misunderstandings, I think, and a lot of confusion, oftentimes, lack of consistency, and I think this will bring a lot of clarity and hopefully reduce the noise around dress code. We do receive a lot of complaints, and oftentimes there are factual pieces to it, and a lot of times, there are a lot of rumors. I mean, we've heard very scary things that have turned out to be untrue. So I, I don't know if it's okay to ask Dana to come up.
Yeah, she can take questions, yeah.
Yeah. If anyone has any specific questions, I know, Member Mendel.
Hi, it's good to see everyone.
Sorry, Dana.
I'm happy to speak to any, any questions about it.
Yeah, very minor question. First of all, this is fantastic, and this has been so long in coming. And this is going to be great for our girls, our non-binary kids, our kids of color. One question I have, so thank you for all the work. One question I have, and this is maybe seemingly minor, but we know that larger girls are more likely to be dress-coded than, than petite girls. And I don't see body type in the list of people not to be discriminated against.
I think there's something that says size. I obviously didn't carry it up with me on the top third. I want to say it's on the left-hand side. I'm a very visual learner. Do you want this? Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it says, students have diverse sizes.
I did nail it. There we go, top third, far left. Oh, there it is. And, and I just feel like it's, it's really important to articulate. I appreciate the accolades, and it's something that when I was, I was asked to work on, I was really excited to. This was not authored solely by me. It felt really important for, like, step one to look like reviewing a breadth of comparable policies both across Maine and nationally, and then also dig into the data of where are there discrepancies, both in terms of who gets dress-coded for what and what the implementation is and what the communication is. So after really digging into the research, it felt like an obvious next step to develop consensus around this. So lots of folks, like, to the tune of over 25, including many sitting behind me here, weighed in about the dress code. We had parents, staff at all levels, students really weigh in on it, and intentionally, folks that feel really differently about some of these issues. So, and then to make sure it really resonated with student voice, I worked with Mr. Hutchins, and he brought this draft through the school, the student council. So I just, I appreciated, but this was very much a patchwork of lots of ideas.
I know this is your passion, too. So, and this is just a clarification for families, students who may question self-expression and culture, or, you know, the difference, just some clarity around, you know, self-expression, again, freedom of expression and hate symbols, things that are racist or bigoted and so forth.
Yeah, so the, the way I look at this revision is it's not a new policy, it's an evolving policy, and it makes sense that when we think about dress codes, we think about nostalgically or not, how dress codes have been in different eras. Like, I talked to my mom, and she had some really interesting stories about dress code when she was in high school. So it feels important that when we're looking at this, this is a culmination of self-recognizing that how we show up is an important part of celebrating who you are and your body and your culture, and in some ways, parts of your identity that are more obvious or less obvious, and gender expression and all of those things. However, there's a limit in terms of making sure, what the line I always lead with is that everyone, students and staff, need to feel safe and respected. So what you don't see in here is a policy that already exists, our student self-expression policy, that I believe was either created or revised in 2020. Does that sound right? I'm looking at everyone behind me. That sounds accurate. Okay. And that, that very deliberately spells out hate insignia. I think it directly references swastikas, Confederate flags are a no-go, and that's not referenced in here, because that's already been a policy very well established. So again, it feels really important that students and staff, though this is specific to students, show up as their most authentic selves and comfortable selves, and while we realize that the purpose is, students are here to learn, and if they feel comfortable and safe, then we don't have to worry about all of the specifics of this. That was sort of the, the intention.
Thank you so much. Member Saret.
Yeah, I want to echo a lot of the comments, particularly Member Luciano's. I really appreciated the clarity of language, and thank you for all your work, and I know it's a team effort, so thank you to the team on this work. The only question I had, I was just curious if this policy is to pass, and I have little doubt that it, that it won't. Are there plans to check in with, with student organizations and students and other stakeholders as this rolls out and just kind of get a feel for, you know, how is this being received?
Yes. So the most exciting part of the policy is the smallest part that we seem to be talking about, which is this final section, bottom of page two, the implementation of student dress policy. When I really dug into this and talked to a bazillion people, maybe not that many, at the high school, it felt clear that this is as much an exercise about clarity and communication as it is about apparel. So it became clear that it, I have no doubt, to no one's fault, that if you asked 20 staff members what the dress code is, you would not get identical answers. And similarly with students, and it seems like, and I certainly understand, and I can only speak to the short time I've been a part of the department, COVID took precedent, right? So it seems like a lot of students, the first time they were getting clarity around the dress code was when they were in violation of the dress code. So creating more of a healthy relationship with understanding felt like a really important thing, so making sure that there's a directive for how students are, I hate that dress-coded is a verb, but that seems to be where we're at. So that there's a really clear directive that our staff will be trained on for how we're doing that. So students feel respected, and it's, it's handled tactfully. And similarly, that we'll train that annually at the discretion of the building administrators. And similarly, that in addition to being embedded in the handbook, students will be trained on it annually as well, and upon new student matriculation, if it's at other times of the year. And getting feedback is important. I'm really proud of this. I think it landed very middle ground. It's, it's evidence-based, it's trauma-informed. I think, I feel really proud that we had a lot of eyes on this. The list on the Google Doc is very long, and that's a good thing. But I don't anticipate this will be the final, the final version. It should evolve, because culture evolves. So I think it's good for now, and I can't wait to see what the next round is. Hopefully, this sticks for a little bit, though. Yeah, of course.
Member Mendel.
Yeah, I'm curious about where it says in paragraph two, guidelines for student dress, which will be developed and enforced by the administration in individual schools. I'm wondering what that actually will look like in practice, because I know the policy will be available to the students. Will the guidelines be written and available to the students in each separate school?
I think we left that intentionally open, recognizing that these are very different conversations with different age ranges. It also felt important to me to have these conversations with each of our administrators to figure out what's the most appropriate rollout for their student population. So I don't have a, a clear answer or one-size-fits-all, and maybe that warrants a revision of the revision. But I think coming up with a communication plan for each, each of our campuses, that feels like a good fit, because, you know, reading this to 12th graders looks different than eighth graders, let alone first graders.
Okay, so, so I guess my question is, by guidelines, what does that actually mean? Does that mean, like, what the students are actually going to read? That's an interpretation of this policy?
I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I, I think we sort of left it as, okay, if this is the directive district-wide, then we'll figure out how it pairs down school by school, knowing that this is the common thread. So I haven't thought about that. And that's a really good consideration.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it, it felt, again, important, and in the implementation section, it's broken down, you know, as scheduled by building administration each time. Because again, I, I don't think we're a one-size-fits-all district, so figuring out what resonates most and having our administrator, our building administrators take the lead, and I'll happily follow, is how, how I've approached it.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that, does, does that piece kind of leave space for administrators to interpret the policy in ways that it wasn't intended?
I don't, I'm not, I mean, I could be off, but I'm not worried about that specifically, because this list is pretty exhaustive. So within the implementation section, it outlines students not meeting the expectations, et cetera. In the event of a dress code violation, outlined in items A through H. So it really creates a threshold of what does and does not constitute, you know, a dress code violation. And again, like, I, who knows how these will, will change and evolve? I think some things that were listed on these types of documents 30 years ago don't apply as much versus, like, an example I could think about, an item H is adding the language around excessively baggy clothing that poses safety risk that addresses different kinds of safety. So in physical education settings, in science labs where students are working with chemicals and flames, those are reasons to not have excessively baggy clothing. Similarly, concealment of weapons is unfortunately something that we all need to be thinking about and we care about deeply, safety planning. So that's another reason. And again, that's something I didn't come up with out of thin air. When I did the research into what other policies looked like, I found that, and I was like, that's intuitive. And it also addresses, like, the other end of the apparel spectrum that we don't talk about as much when we're thinking about clothing covering bodies. So it felt like an equity address, too.
So when, so when I read this, I took it as, even those guidelines have to be under this strict kind of template, right, following A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And I understand what Member Mendel is saying, though. Will those guidelines be up to, you know, implicit biases, for example, that, that may kind of
Yeah.
shift the guidelines? But I think if we stick to a kind of strict following of a template of, whatever the guidelines are, they cannot violate A through, you know, H, for example.
Yeah, and with more specific planning of how that's interpreted building by building, that would be a question for Superintendent Tager, so I, I can't answer that. I think it's an ongoing conversation, though, to make sure it.
I want to just thank you as well, and it is an ongoing conversation, and this is a conversation across the country right now. And I appreciate you taking a lead for the Bangor School Department, and the fact that you researched what was happening in the state nationally, and then you talked to a whole lot of different folks that are, that are concerned about this. So I think we're in a great spot, and I think to answer Member Mendel and some of the others, it's, it continues to be looked at, but I feel real good with where we are going into the school year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with it, and I, it's a brave stance, and it's a clear stance, and I think it fills in the communication gaps. So yeah, I'm, I'm excited for it, and we'll see where it leads.
Thank you for what you did.
Of course, of course, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, and can I get a motion? Oh, did we already, we already did that, right? Okay, so, all in favor?
Motion passes five zero, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dana. Okay, on to committee updates. First, are there any comments or questions from the committee? And if not, then we can jump right into committee appointments, any representatives' reports. And I believe that, Member Mendel, do you want to give a quick report?
Sure. So we had a workshop just before this meeting to talk about the recommendations that came to us from the Mental Health Citizens Advisory Committee. We had a presentation on June 8th. And so today, we just talked in the workshop about those recommendations and where we want to go with them. So I'll just give a brief overview, and my little pad here is about to die, so hopefully I'll get through it before that happens. So, sorry. The perils of technology. Okay, so we had, just to, just kind of recap what we did in the committee, we had three subcommittees working on three different projects. One was the inventory committee, which looked at what we are currently doing in the Bangor schools with regard to social and emotional learning and mental health. So that, we created, that committee created a huge multi, like, maybe 60 pages or something, summary of everything that's already being done in the schools, which was helpful. And the second committee was the assessment committee, and we, I was on that subcommittee, and we looked at two ways of tracking student mental health. One is participation in the main Integrated Youth Health Survey, which is a population-based survey that's, that 80% of Maine schools participate in currently. So that, that. So that, that survey, if we participate, will allow us aggregate data about what's going on with our students. Students will not be personally identified in that survey. So it's got a ton of research behind it as far as the validity and reliability of the survey instrument. So we have not historically participated in that, but the committee recommended that we go ahead and do that. So Superintendent Taggert has talked to the administrators about it, and we have some ongoing questions about parental consent for that and how that's going to work. And we have some, some things we have to clarify with the CDC, who puts out that survey, about what type of consent we're going to need. So I'm going to follow up with them and hook them up with Superintendent Taggert to hash out that detail. But I think the decision was to move ahead in participating in the MIES. And I think, you know, from my perspective, when we look at, you know, the tobacco ban that the city council voted for the other night, this is the kind of thing that we'll know about before it gets to be a really big problem. In my practice, I work with college students. The majority of them admit to being addicted to nicotine. So if we find out, you know, through this survey, that 30% of our kids, for example, in ninth grade are using tobacco products or used tobacco products in the last week, we can really work to target that behavior before it gets out of control. So that's kind of the reasoning behind it. And I've been on the CDC website, and the data that's provided is fantastic. The public data is only available on a countywide basis. The school and district-based data will be provided to the superintendent for our internal use only. So, so we don't have to worry about, you know, what everybody's going to think, like, Bangor is this and that. Okay, so I'll try to make this briefer. So, so that's one thing we're moving forward with. We, another question that that committee addressed was whether it would make sense to give an individually-based mental health screening instrument, which many schools do. And currently, we use a teacher observation tool called the, can't remember what it's called, SBSS or something, that I think was implemented right before COVID, so I'm not sure it's actually happening. So the committee recommended a checklist called the Pediatric Symptom Checklist to be used, but we're putting that on hold because there are a lot of questions about, you know, asking kids directly. You know, the research shows that it's safe and it's helpful, but there are a lot of, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of reluctance to move ahead with something like that at this point. So we're kind of putting that one on hold. So that's the assessment committee. The best practices committee came up with a whole bunch of stuff, but what we're moving forward with is the PBIS program, and we have, is it four to six teachers from each school? Is that right? Who are going to do the training to implement that program. So that's really exciting. It's, it's happening all over the country, and it'll be really great when we have good training, so we can implement it in a, in a quality way. Let's see. Another issue was about staffing for mental health personnel, and we have added one school counselor and one social worker. Am I right about that?
Yes, you are.
And Superintendent Taggert and I guess Director Babbin are being very creative in trying to find some psychologists to join. We lost one psychologist this year, and there's a huge need for that. So they're being very creative in trying to recruit people in different forms, employed, contracted, everything. So, so our next, so those are the big things that we're moving forward with. We have a question about what's going to happen to the committee in the future. Right now, we're, we've stopped meeting for now, and I think we're going to kind of shelve that decision until November and see what the committee structure looks like, and then make that decision about whether we want to move forward with the committee and in what form. I know that the committee pretty much unanimously thought that they wanted to keep meeting, that there was more work to do, and so we'll see what form that takes. So next steps are for future work of the committee or some form of it is to revisit the individual screeners so that we can identify kids at risk early. Perhaps a peer mediation program or, and/or restorative practices for discipline, which is a huge, a huge, that would be a huge paradigm shift, but the committee was interested in looking at that. So those are things possibly down the road.
Excellent. Thank you so, so much. Any other updates? Member Luciano.
I just wanted to share that we are kicking off a Best Buddies program within the district, and I was very excited to share this. But, so Best Buddies is an organization that champions individuals with individual, excuse me, intellectual and developmental disabilities. And so we've always had, obviously, good interaction with Special Olympics and integrated sports. Is that what it's called?
Unified.
Unified, thank you. Sorry, the thing Sue did. Apologies. Sorry, Sue. Anyway, moving on. So this is a sister organization to them, and what the goal is, is for us to sort of build some friendships in naturally occurring places in the, some of the schools. And I won't share too much until we have more that rolls out, but we're looking to do this fall, get some, some friendships made. So I'm very excited to help with this and champion a little bit from what I can do. So yay, yay, Best Buddies. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have some information items. We have important dates. Monday, I'm sorry?
Caroline.
Oh, Caroline, I'm so sorry. Do you have, you have student committee member updates?
I don't have any student updates, but I think it's worth noting, I saw on Google Classroom recently that the guidance department at the high school has been posting a monthly newsletter, and I think this is a new initiative, and I don't know if anyone can talk about it, but it looks like it's pretty promising. I, as a student, I encourage any more engagement from the guidance department. I think it's really good to have like a summary of things that are going on for the month to come, and I think it's a really good organization for students who just need like, you know, that kind of summary, like that brief, this is what's happening in the month, this is what you need to look forward to, things like that. So it's a good tool, I think. So thank you for that.
Dr. Leach, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, you know, as a, as a guidance department, it's difficult to find a way to communicate. So we're kind of wrapping up all of our announcements, I guess you would say, anything important that you need to know, some tips, and it'll be monthly for freshmen through juniors, but more frequently for seniors. And Caroline, I know you're going to be a senior this year, so you're going to be hearing from us a little more often, but it's just to keep you updated on anything like scholarships, any upcoming events at the high school. So yeah, it's, so I appreciate you pointing that out. So we're, we're trying to get the word out on anything that students might need to know.
And I, I'm happy that you're with us, so you can act as it leaves on between the students and guidance and bridge those gaps.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and we are sending those to parents as well through emails, and then trying to keep parents updated on the app as well. So.
Great. Member Mendel?
Yeah, that was my question.
Okay, okay, perfect. All righty. Moving on to important dates. Monday, August 29th, 2022, we have the beginning-of-year ceremony, 8:00 AM, Peaks Auditorium, and I would love for you all to attend. Thursday, September 1st, 2022, first day of school. Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 PM here in council chambers. We will also have an executive session at 6:30 about school safety. So, you know, it'll be really exciting, and more to come on that. Wednesday, September 28th, 2022, another regular meeting, 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Final call for questions or comments from the committee. Member Saret.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a, and I meant to bring this up at the earlier, earlier comments and questions, but it slipped my mind. It's just a question for Superintendent Taggert, and I, I know that budget season is far away, but it'll be here before, before you know it. And there's a piece of data that I'm hoping can be brought forward, both to myself and to the committee if others are interested. What I'm really looking for is a breakdown of what we're spending per student at the five elementary schools. I think that'd be valuable data that will, will help inform some important discussions as we head into budget season. Thank you.
Okay, what we'll do is I'll, I'll meet with Jerry Hayman, and maybe I'll have you, and we meet monthly, and we could kind of talk through that and then share with the committee.
Excellent. And I have a couple of questions. One is regarding the staff vacancies. I'm wondering if you can give us a quick update on that, and also about the health clinic. I would love to get an update on how things are going there as well.
Okay, two, two topics, and I, normally, what we do, Jane, is I respond after the meeting. So if you'll give your phone number to Ray Finney right here before you leave, I will call you probably tomorrow or Friday, but I can give an overall, as the chair is asking. I can tell you that we have one special ed teacher opening currently at William S. Cohen School, so we feel real good about our teacher vacancies. We have three that I'm meeting with that are in the process, but I'm, they'll be in place by the time we start. So we have one that we are searching for an applicant, still, and Mr. and Ms. Brenner's working on that one. Ed techs is an interesting situation. We have no more vacancies than we've had the prior year, but what's happening is we did do a pay raise, as you know, for all of our employees, which is good. I think it's made it a little bit better for hiring, but it seems to me it's very difficult to keep, keep up with. People are coming and going, I think, in jobs all throughout the state of Maine and the, and the country. So to answer a question on ed techs, we have seven schools that are not fully hired on ed techs, and we are missing 20 ed techs. And that's a number that's very similar to what we would have had a year ago, and it was less than we've had the previous three years, which I think is, is an okay stat considering we're just getting through a pandemic. The number that, that is higher is we are 11 short at Bangor Regional, so that's a number that would be of concern. And then I know it was mentioned tonight about psychologists and speech and language, and what I would tell you is things have changed across the country since the pandemic, and some for the good and some not for the good. But just to give you an, like, an example of psychological services, we have an interview scheduled for next Tuesday for a contracted psychologist who can provide in-person consultations. We've contacted with a psychologist, her office will complete 85 to 90% of the evaluations necessary for the district in-person providers. We've contacted a company that will provide additional evaluations through telehealth observations. We've contacted Maine Testing and Counseling that will provide testing and consultation specific to one of our elementary schools. We've contacted another professional to provide specific risk assessments. So when you look at some of these services, that normally we hired a person to do those, we're doing a lot of telehealth, and I'm not sure it's a bad thing. So I think we'll see how that unfolds. One of the parts of this is pretty good is we have a pretty good way to trace all the meetings that have happened. We have a paperwork trail electronically, so I think some of this is actually good, but more to be seen. But we've had to, as Member Mendel mentioned, I go out of the box. So Kristi Babbin, who's our director of pupil services, is looking at some unique solutions to problems. But I think to, fine-tune your question, we're short one teacher, and I'm concerned of about 20 ed techs right now. The principals are doing a great job hiring, but it seems like as quick as they're hiring, people are moving. So we're in some flux, but I don't think it's unusual. I would be concerned if we had a, if I was to tell you we had 20 teachers that we were short, that would concern me. All of this is a concern, but the major thing I would want you to take away is we're short one teacher right now. You asked me two things.
Thank you. And the health clinic.
Oh, the health clinic, okay. The health clinic, Ms. Principal Butler may want to weigh in on this, but we have been open at the health clinic every Thursday and Friday all summer, which is a very good thing. So students are getting their mental health services even in the summer. I don't know how many they see in a day, but I know they're open eight to five Thursday, Friday.
Honestly, I don't see very much of them. They're, they've worked their way into the building and the access, secrets, all that stuff. It's really fluid, so I think it's kind of the way it should be. Last I checked formally, and I did see the mental health provider happened to run into her the other day, brief conversation, they're very happy, eager to start the school year, and status quo on being, by their description, 80% full in the slots that they have to offer. And it seems like some of the challenges of, you know, logistically coordinating, ensuring that meetings are made, et cetera, it seems like a lot of those dragons have been slayed. So it feels like we're opening with a little more efficiency and, and
Thank you.
Yeah. Excellent. Members, Sectors.
Superintendent Taggert, can you clarify something for me? The way I understand it is Bangor is a school district hires more teachers than other school districts who hire more ed techs. So the fact that we have a full roster of teachers is where that, you know, some other school districts may have fewer empty positions for ed techs, but they don't have as many teachers. They rely on their ed techs. Is that, is, is that a
I may ask Kathy to assist me with that question, but I can tell you, I can tell you this, our class sizes are very favorable as far as the amount of students per teacher, and we have managed to keep that going forward with the present budget that we're under. Do you want to just discuss ed techs at all, Kathy, or if you're not comfortable, we can wait till Kristi comes back?
I really don't know what the number of our other districts
Yeah.
No. Come on, now.
I do know that we employ many more ed tech threes than most districts. Most districts employ ed tech one or two, and that's because ed tech three have higher level of education and ability to do things more independently. So we have a higher expectation of people being able to do the positions that they're in without as much supervision.
May I ask a follow-up question? And if we, so with these empty positions, if we are not able to fill them, what then, what then happens?
One of the things that we did last year, and Kathy hit a really good point there, is our ed techs all have a bachelor's degree. A lot of the surrounding districts, they do not. So we are hiring really high-quality people to work with our students. Last year, we did hire some folks that were not ed tech three, so had less than a bachelor degree, so that is one possible solution. We also did a three or four job fairs last year, so that's something we can look at as well. We're still a couple of weeks out. We have people that we're interviewing. I think it's a problem that we'll have to keep an eye on at this point.
Other comments, questions before we wrap up? Okay, so I will sign out of this one before I
You do.
Okay. So adjournment. Can I get a motion, please?
I'm going to.
All in favor? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.